Our August 27, 2019 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be given by our very own Council Representative, Mr. Ray Wade. Please rise.
Prayer first. Good evening, everyone. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight. Thank you for your many blessings, Lord. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to have this meeting. Allow us all have open minds and open hearts and do the duty of our city that we so love so much. These things we ask in our Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wade.
Thank you, sir.
Tonight, in employee recognition, tonight I'm going to recognize Angela Walker, our Senior Accountant. The city has received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Budget. This award is from a nationally recognized organization, the Government Finance Officers' Association. The award represents a significant achievement by the City of Longview. It reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the entity had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines, and the entity's budget must serve as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communication device. Angela Walker is the primary individual responsible for achieving this award. Please welcome Angela Walker. Please come forward. Come on up here. Thank you, thank you so much. I know you all know how extensive our budget is. Our budget is an incredible piece of work, and I mean that literally. And when you're talking about 160-plus million dollars' worth of finances and numbers that have to all meet and match and square off, it's a huge undertaking. And Angela does an amazing job along with all of our departments and our finance area. But to receive this award is a great honor for our community and to have you be so integral in that. We just thank you so much for what you do. And look at the smile she does with it. It's just like every time you see her, she's never in a bad mood, she's always happy. And what a great employee it is for the City of Longview. I know, I appreciate that, the citizens appreciate it. So thank you so much for what you do. You're just a doll. Thank you so much. Hold on a second. We've got this. This is a gigantic plaque, and it's very heavy, so hold that and let's get a great picture. Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you, Angela. Okay, I'm gonna stand up here while I do the community recognition. Tonight, I'm gonna recognize a young man that some of you may or may not know, but you need to, because this is a very special individual in our community, and his name is Shamir Davis. I just want you to know how important this guy is. I'm gonna read some stuff about him. He grew up in Shreveport. He's been along with me for five years. He graduated from Northwestern State in Natchitoches. He played professional basketball and played in Spain for two seasons of 2013 to 2015. He somehow had a connection with Ruben Martin. Ruben Martin somehow got him connected with Thrive 360. And in summer 2015, we just had one summer thing only. He stayed in the program because of the kids that he helped. And I just want you to understand what we're talking about here. We're talking about a guy who is a young man in the prime of his life, and he's decided to stay in Longview and help kids that have really no, I don't wanna say chance, but their chances are not as good as our chances are. And so for someone like that to do that, at age 23, he adopted a young man that was only 14-years-old and has helped to raise that young man. He walked away from basketball and he walked right into Thrive 360. And I tell you, he's made such an impact with these kids. He took them to a Ranger game. Some of these kids were so, they didn't even know what the bus was that they were going on. They were afraid of the escalators. They wouldn't get on the escalators because they don't have these experiences. And you have someone like Shamir who will hold their hand and walk with them and teach them and show them. It's a testament to what a heart this man has. They didn't even understand that charter bus was not a school bus. They didn't, they don't make those connections, but they do through this young man. And so I just wanna take the time to say, you know, what a great guy we have living in Longview, doing things for the community. And Shamir, come on up here, man. Come on up. He graduated from Leterno in May with his, with his master's degree. He's got triplet girls that are nine months old. Bless his heart. But this is, this is the kinda guy that makes Longview a better place to be. And I tell you, I'm proud to stand right next to him, even though he's taller than I am. We look about the same build, don't we? Look at this man, he's amazing. And he and I are gonna take on Ray Wade. Anybody you want, one-on-two, Ray. We got you. He and I, he's my man. But I just wanna say thank you for your dedication to helping those that need it the most, Shamir. You see the need, and you took a step, and you made a difference, and you're keen to make a difference. And I want you to continue to do that because we need you here in Longview, and I appreciate you very much. What a pleasure. Honor.
Thank you, sir.
That's a fine gentleman out there. That's a classic example of you never know when you change one life, what that one life will turn into. And so, you know, we all have the ability to do that. It's nice to see someone who puts that, those words into action. It's just a, it's a testament to Shamir. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now to citizens' comment. I have a speaker card, Mr. Dale Bodie. Please come forward.
My agenda is the last outage we had. I bought a new house in 1999 in Spring Hill, about two years before I got ready to retire. I retired at 55 because I thought enough of myself. And I got, I looked, I had 270 hours after high school in my trade at Penn State and other places, so I was atoned of what was going on. So I wanted to get out of that trade and get off the road and start living a normal life, which I'm trying to do. But anyway, I had 44 power outages in that one house the following calendar year, and I would keep contacting that E.P., what are y'all gonna do about it? So finally, Mr. Smith called me, and he said, "Mr. Bodie, would you please call me instead of turning us into Public Utilities Commission?" I said, "Well, sir, if I did that, Public Intelligence Commission wouldn't know you wasn't doing the job." So there's where this started from. Now, these outages are all, they never take any action until after something has happened. It's never proactive, it's always after. So it shuts a whole community down, businesses, everything. You'll have these freak accidents, no wind, no bad weather, no power overages, any of this stuff will go on. I've seen it happen at Longview Mall for hours for no reason whatsoever. They don't have the engineering they used to have. That's just some of the stuff I wanna talk about. But the other part of it is, when they first came out with this bill, like you would get your bill, and then half of it would be an energy bill or fuel bill. Well, back in those days, it was four or five dollars a gallon fuel. I can understand part of that, but it never got adjusted back to where it should've been. In other words, when the fuel went down, we should've got a kickback from it, and we didn't. We've also got a monopoly around here we shouldn't have. And what I'm saying is, it's hard to tell somebody that's got a monopoly on you how to run their business when there's no competition. So this cuts everybody's throat in Longview, Texas, as well as the cities, because they gotta pay the same rate, they have nobody else to choose from. So these are some things I wish y'all would consider the next time we get in this position. And it's, and to me, it's almost impossible to send a letter to Public, to Killers Commission right now and get anything done whatsoever. So that's not gonna happen with me no more. So that's a no-win situation, if you know what I'm saying. I won't go any further on that, because I don't hurt anybody's feelings. But the thing is, if something needs to be done about that, and this has been going on for many years. Now, best I remember, back in 2000 or so, there was a deal where we could've had choices of like four or five different electric companies. I think that went away. I'm not for sure about that. But if, the more you have competition, the more you can choose from, and the more these people will be more diligent about doing their jobs, instead of not doing them and saying, "Well, we're the only people in town, you're gonna have to do it that way." That's a kind of a coarse way of saying things, but that's what I'm seeing. And that's basically what I wanted to present. I'm really perturbed about this. I even tried to go down to courthouse and talk to the senator that would never meet with me, because he, I knew he couldn't do a thing about except talk. And he didn't have any recourse between there and Austin or the Utilities Commission, so I knew it was, I knew it was a dead end street.
Mr. Bodie, I'm sorry, but your time's up, sir.
But I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming to us. My next speaker card is Susan Tanner.
Thank you for having this where we could speak about things. And I wanted to address the...
Ms. Tanner, so would you please state your name and your address, please?
I'm sorry, Susan Tanner, 205 East Hoyt.
Thank you.
I wanted to address the increase that's proposed to be coming on, on our taxes, and I'm assuming that's, I was reading it in the paper, I'm assuming that's our city portion of the taxes, since it's the City Council. And my question really to you is, have you considered maybe an alternative to or with maybe a smaller increase? And my question comes from, there seems to be several large properties that have been cut out of the city limits that doesn't quite make sense, and some of them right in the middle of the city. Could those not be put back in? Then there are also some other properties that are in the city limits that are not being charged a city tax, or are being charged a tax that seems to be, they get some kind of discount maybe, that seems very disproportionate. One of the ones I was looking at, for instance, the country club that shows it's in the city out off of 259. Anyway, the name of that one, I could look it up, but I don't wanna take that time. I wanted to have the information. It's assessed at like 1.6 million, but for some reason, there is a discount where they're only being taxed on 44,000. So there's questions like that that seem like they need to be maybe audited and addressed along with, or maybe instead of, this increase. So my question is, would you please look at doing an audit of the properties that maybe should be taxed or should be looked at at least, to see if that's an offset to what you're proposing as a tax on the rest, or hike on the rest of us, or all of us? Okay?
Thank you so much. I have no more speaker cards. We'll go to Public Safety Update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, Council members, Mr. Bonds, good evening. Tonight will be the last opportunity that I have to speak about our National Night Out Kickoff Party that will be coming up real soon on Tuesday, September 3rd, at 6:00 p.m. at Mod Cobb Activity Center. We'd like to encourage all of our residents in our communities that are interested in hosting a National Night Out Party to come to this event and register your parties and obtain information on how you can organize your parties in your, in your neighborhood. There are several different reasons why we encourage our residents to host a National Night Out Party. The first is to get to know your neighbors. We have a lot of neighborhoods where individuals don't know their neighbors. So knowing your neighbors and who they are and who's supposed to be there will help the neighborhoods keep a better eye on their neighborhoods, to know who should be coming and who shouldn't be coming in the neighborhoods. We're hoping that through the National Night Out Party that they would go ahead and form a crime watch group that would meet local, organized group that would meet several times a year with our local power officers and the officers that work in those particular areas. Third, it'll form a partnership with the Police Department where we can work closely with those groups and offer different crime prevention tips for homeowners and the various neighborhoods. And fourth, it gives them the opportunity to meet the officers that work that area along with the firefighters and all the other city employees that come out that night and participate with our National Night Out event. Last week, or last council meeting, we asked the council to take a picture with our National Night Out banner to show support for our National Night Out program, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that. Our National Night Out event will be Tuesday, October 1st, and the theme for 2019 is connecting communities on one neighborhood at a time. So that's very important. We get into one community and connect all the communities, then we have everybody that has a concentrated effort in working closely with law enforcement to hopefully reduce criminal activity in their neighborhoods. So thank you all for taking your time to support us in this venture. I know it becomes somewhat of a competition on National Night Out amongst the council districts as well, with the various parties throughout the city. So thank you all for your support in that. This past week, I wanna give a shout-out to our Citizens on Patrol group. They held their annual appreciation luncheon for police and fire out at the exhibit building, and I just can't thank them enough for the support that they show for public safety here in our, in our community. We'd like to invite anyone that's interested in attending to a retirement reception for Sergeant Chris Clark, who will be retiring Friday, August 30th at 1:00. Chris has served as the traffic sergeant over our traffic unit for the last couple of years, and he'll be retiring with 21 years of service. And the reception will be held in the municipal courtroom, and we'd like to invite anybody that would like to stop by and wish him congratulations on his retirement. We also have some new employees within the Police Department that I'd like to introduce tonight. Morgan Talent was just recently hired as an administrative assistant over our patrol division, so she's getting settled in, and if you have an opportunity to need assistance, Morgan will be there to help you. And Kaylee Goodman, who was hired and works in our property room, is a property technician, helping us categorize and store and release all of our property from our property room. So wanna welcome them to the Police Department and congratulate them and thank them for the job that they do. This week, we also had the opportunity yesterday to commission four new officers in the department. Officer Damian Lopez, Officer Joseph Nelms, Officer Timothy Magnus, and Officer Michael Cruz. These are our four most recent hires in the Police Department, and two of them come to us with service from other cities. And the other two, all four of them have already completed the Police Academy, so this will allow us to get them right out into field training beginning probably next week. Our Citizens Police Academy will begin September 5th. Anyone interested in participating in this year's Citizens Police Academy, I'd like to encourage them to obtain an application at longviewtexas.gov/cpa and come on Tuesday and Thursday nights from 6:30 to 8:30 and see some different presentations and learn a little bit more about the Police Department and how we operate. Over the last couple of months, council, y'all have been talking about the upcoming census in 2020. In preparation for that census, we do now, at this time, have some individuals in town that will be performing the first phase of conducting the census in 2020, and that is address verification. So we will see some census workers in the neighborhoods. Some may be going door-to-door to verify different addresses to make sure that the proper count can be conducted in 2020. All of the individuals that will be doing this door-to-door will have an official census ID card that's issued by the U.S. Department of Commerce, the Bureau of Census, and should have that visibly attached to their person, and will show that to anybody if they're requested to show or verify that they are with the census. So we're gonna continue to push this out on the different social media sites for public awareness, so that our citizens will know that they will be in the neighborhoods and contacting businesses to verify different addresses for the 2020 census. Wanted to get that out. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Bishop? Thank you, sir. Chief Steelman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds. Thanks for the opportunity to update you on what the Fire Department's had going on since our last council meeting. We have a great support network in this community, and I talk about it all the time. I'm so proud that I had the opportunity to work here in Longview. The citizens really just jump out and support us at every turn. One of the most recent examples last week was at Colonial Village Senior Apartments. They held a little, just a kind of a little come-and-go with snacks and gifts for our first responders to come through. This particular picture was interesting to me when it came across my desk. That guy over there on the left is Mr. Harold Hardy. Harold retired from the Fire Marshal's Office. He worked back for the Fire Department in, I think, the 60s, 70s, and 80s. So he had already been in and retired probably before any of that crew was ever even born, or pretty close. But Cruz had a great time going through there, and I just wanna thank the residents at Colonial Village for their continued support. I'll echo Chief Bishop's sentiments about our citizens on patrol. Great, great opportunity for networking and fellowship with the first responders' community, the Sheriff's Department, Fire Police, everybody was out there. These guys went over the top, and certainly appreciate their hospitality. Again, it's just part of that wonderful support network that we have as far as public safety in our community. I'm really excited about this. And you'll remember, a couple of years ago, we started a program in partnership with Longview High School, Kilgore College, to put on an EMT Academy, an EMT program in Longview High School, so that a student could enter that, and by the time they graduated, they could have their EMT certification. And we're doing that as a funnel to hopefully funnel them into a future job in public safety. Well, I'm pleased to announce that the same, the same type program has started over at Pine Tree High School. Their first day of this class was yesterday, except theirs is not on the EMT track, theirs is on the basic fire curriculum. So their students, they're all seniors, I believe there's eight of them that are registered in it right now, but by the time they graduate high school, they will be eligible to challenge the state test to get their basic firefighter certification. So it's just a great opportunity for us to network with local kids, to convince them or to demonstrate to them what a great career you could have in public safety, and hopefully keep some of these local kids local and continue and have them serve in our community. So we're just really excited about this. And again, a great partnership opportunity with Pine Tree High School and Kilgore College. Certainly, certainly excited about the direction of that. You don't need me to tell you it's hot, but you do need me to tell you to stay hydrated. Some of the heat indices of past week have been between 105 and 110. It'll really just suck the life right out of you. I was mowing my yard late yesterday evening, and Mr. Purtle came walking by my neighborhood, and I don't know who was sweating more, me or him, but I felt like I almost ran in there and got him a bottle of water, but I knew he was getting close to getting home, so I cut him a break. He was, he was making tracks. He didn't stop to offer to help me weed eat, so I was kinda, had my feelings hurt a little bit on that.
I couldn't believe it was you. I had to look three times.
Stop the Bleed. This is a program that we continue to offer in and about Longview. If it's just a great opportunity to do some training, that next training opportunity that's scheduled is September the 24th at the UT Tyler Longview Campus out on 259. If you're interested in attending that or registering for some of the other ones that are already scheduled or hosting your own, please reach out to our EMS Section Chief Amy Dodgen, and she will take care of you on that. We've already seen the benefit of these, of our residents training themselves to be responding, or to be prepared to respond in the event of a bleeding emergency. We've already seen lives saved because of this program. It's such a great program. Code Red, I'm gonna keep pushing this one. It's a free service that our city offers, to stay informed of emergencies and events when they happen, so we urge our residents to take advantage of that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Steelman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're not at a consent agenda. Any items council might pull off for separate discussion?
No, do approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries.
I'd like to make note that we'd like to welcome Mr. Wayne Mansfield, our President and CEO of LeadCo here tonight, and also Ms. Claire Henry, one of our voting board members, who I know had a huge part in this bylaws revision that we just voted on. So we thank you both for being here, and thank you for the work y'all doing at LeadCo. Keep up the good work, gang. Thank you so much.
We are now to a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. We'll vote on the rate on Thursday, September 12th, at 5:30 in the City Hall. This does require a public hearing. Ms. Cohen.
Good evening. This is the first of two required public hearings on the proposed tax rate. The second will be held Thursday on August 29th. The proposed tax rate is 17.47 for debt service, 38.42 cents for operations and maintenance, making it a total of 55.89 cents per $100 valuation. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Ms. Cohen? This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, comments? Public hearing is now closed. Thank you so much. Action item. There's a discussion on the proposed 2019-2020 budget for the City of Longview. I put this on here just so we could discuss anything that wouldn't like to be discussed by council or by our city manager, but anything you'd like to discuss at this point in time? Very good. I like that. Action item. We'll consider a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager, the city manager's designated to execute necessary documents to an interlocal agreement with the City of Henderson for geographic information, system support, and maintenance services. Justin Kier.
Mayor, members of council, Mr. Bonds, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about this potential interlocal agreement with the City of Henderson for GIS services. City manager of City of Henderson, Mr. Jay Abercrombie, who's here with us tonight, approached me to talk about GIS, work order management systems, and permitting systems. I explained to him some of the successes we've had here in Longview, as well as the City of Kilgore, and he asked if we'd be willing to work with them as well. We took a look at workload in GIS. Now, we don't believe we can eliminate a position in GIS, but we do have some capacity there to assist them. Our GIS is really more in a, in a maintenance mode now, so we do believe we have the time to do that. In addition, the majority of this work would be done remotely, with the exception of a few meetings, and the proposal is for Henderson to compensate us $60,000 annually, and we do believe that is less than a consultant could provide these services to them. In addition, the second year of this agreement, it would go up based on the Consumer Price Index for the South Region. Be happy to answer any questions. Their city council has approved this.
Excellent. Any questions of Mr. Kier or Mr. Abercrombie? Thank you for being here, Mr. Abercrombie. Yes, sir, Mr. Wade.
The workload of our staff on a weekly-per-hour basis, and how many staff members will be appointed to this?
Sure. So it's, it's a multi-phase project. Initially, we, we think we'll spend about 30 hours a week setting up the GIS and kind of building it from scratch. That'll then transition into setting up some, some cloud servers for them, which a consultant will help us do that, and then we'll get into the work order management side of things, which will, will take some time as well.
So on the management side, you're not sure the workload as well, will it continue to be, we're gonna...
I do believe over time it will decrease, and it'll become more maintenance, just like we're doing here in Longview.
And that's why we'll, I'm sure, reevaluate this after one year, and you said we would adjust...
One year, and then it renews for four additional automatically, and then we would bring it back to council.
Perfect. Very good. Mr. Wright.
So you don't think we'll have to hire anybody to...
Absolutely not, yes, sir.
Now, on a, let's say, per-hour basis, where you're doing, you're saying $60,000 for year one, is that going to be on par with what somebody else would be charging to do at this...
I do believe it's less than a consultant would charge them to do the same exact work. So they are, they're getting a benefit from, from utilizing the city as well.
To them, it would be a benefit.
And then to us, it would be a benefit, because that's additional revenue that, that we don't currently have. Yes, sir.
And we can already do it with our current personnel, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
So that's a benefit to us, benefit to them.
And we have the, we kinda have the footprint.
Right. We have a GIS system already, we've already done it.
Yeah, we do it with Kilgore as well.
Exactly.
Right? Yeah.
And it would replicate exactly what we've done there.
You know, it's nice to see us be able to provide those services to our neighboring communities, because, you know, that's, that's what interlocal agreements are all about. They, they benefit both parties, not just one or the other. And I think that's very important, that we're able to do that, and that we're, and other communities want to partner with us. That's what we should do as these Texans. We should all, you know, do that when we can. So I applaud both Henderson and you all, Justin, for making this available and bringing it to us.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Is there a motion?
No, do approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're not out of the committee interest. Mr. Moore.
Well, tonight I want to share some additional details about our 150th birthday parade. The grand sesquicentennial trek will be on Saturday, April 18th, 2020. The grand sesquicentennial trek will be on Saturday, April 18th, 2020.
Women's?
What?
Oh, no.
Yeah. And it'll, it'll follow the same route downtown as our Christmas parade does each year. Some highlights from our centennial parade in 1970. It was reported that about 35,000 people attended that parade, and there were over 200 entries, so we hope we can top that. For our parade, we've not only invited our high school bands, but are also working with community partners, and have invited the Wells Fargo Stagecoach, the Budweiser Clydesdales, the U.S. Army First Cavalry Division Horse Cavalry Detachment from Fort Hood, and a horse-drawn hearse. The horse-drawn hearse has confirmed they will be there. To spark some creativity and encourage floats to participate, community sponsorship is stepping up, and we'll have some special awards, including $250 cash for each award, a trophy, and of course, knowing that your float, 50 years from now, will be up on the screen, being shown for our bicentennial. I will be 124 years old then, and, and intend to be in the audience, looking at the screen. Leading the awards, and we have, we have taken your title, Mayor, leading the awards will be the Mayor's Award for Best Overall Float, Grand Marshal's Award for Most Representative of Community Spirit, the Showmanship Award for Best Unique Theme Development and Most Beautiful, the Innovator Award for Most Outstanding Use of Imagination, Innovation, and Technology, the Americana Award for Most Patriotic, and the Heritage Award for Best Scenes of the Past. And I might add, Mr. Pertle, that in 1970, our very own Pine Tree ISD won that award.
Oh, you were a kid. I wasn't on that float, but I was there.
Were you? That's impressive. Anyway, as, yeah, see, where are you?
Right there. He's with the hat on.
Are you the little kid with the hat?
That's him right there.
Yeah. Or are you stuck in the cabin?
He's the kid with the hat and mustache.
Hey, Andy and Nona ain't far back there, too.
No, we're not. I remember the last one.
Okay. Well, as details are finalized in, for the parade, visit longviewtexas.gov/150 to learn more, and also at that site will be access to the parade entry form. That concludes my prepared remarks for the...
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Snyder?
Nothing.
Mr. White?
Uh, nothing, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Ishihara?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Wright?
Yep, a couple things. First, before, could you go back to the very first slide with the train?
Oh.
The locomotive? I just wanted to point out that if we can, right there, that was my, that's my and Steve's Rotary Group, Longview Grayton Rotary did that. I don't know if we won any awards for it that year, but...
You did. You, you did win an award.
Probably the Mayor's Award or something like that. Is that the top award?
It was, it was the top award, and have you signed up to participate in this one?
Oh, yeah, I think, yes, we are.
Good.
Also, okay, back to the real, I want to, we've had people, Mark and Carmella up to here as Andy's recipients of the community service, and I want to thank them, and Am Bucks, too, for the wonderful job they've done out at Spring Hill Park to cover the, some of these different, not rides, but the swings and the slides and all, so that kids that, I guess you could, with special needs, can use these things all summer long. Those, those slides and all get awfully hot in the summer, and so I want to thank them for the great job they did getting these installed.
Very good. Yes, much appreciated. Mr. Pertle?
Nothing.
Mr. Bonds?
Okay. We have some upcoming city events. We have, city office will be closed on Monday, September 2nd, for Labor Day. National Night Kickoff, as Chief Bishop said, is Tuesday, September the 3rd. Senior Prom is Saturday, September the 7th. I'm curious, a winter wonderland for those over 55. Okay. That's pretty early for prom season at school. Okay, great. That sounds like a lot of fun. So contact the parks for more information on that. We have some upcoming community events. We have Downtown Live starting back up Friday, August the 30th through November the 1st, so that'll be a lot of fun as always. Sunday, September 1st, Kansas will be performing at the Belcher Center. Okay. How many of y'all know who Kansas is? Thank you all. What a great group that is. That, that, most y'all are too young for this, but they were, they're fantastic. I think I probably know every song that they sing. So that'll be great at the Belcher Center. September 6th to September the 14th, we have the 70th Annual Greck County Fair. That's always a blast to be at. They always do a great job putting that on, so take your family and friends out there and enjoy those festivities. For information about city events, go to longviewtexas.gov/calendars. For information about community events, go to, visit longviewtexas.com/events. We have a lot of things going on in Longview. We've got things up and going, looking good. Okay, survey question. Chief Steelman, you can't answer this, because you know the answer. How much would you guess a brand-new fire truck would cost? Well, those are your, those are your ranges right there. And, and before I became a council member, I would have missed this by a long shot. But the correct answer is, there's your, you see, people are very intelligent. Correct answer, our third slide, is 500,000 plus. And you know what? You think, I mean, that's a ton of money for, for a vehicle, but when you really go and look at what those vehicles are capable of doing, and what they, the service that they perform, oh my goodness, it's, it's worth every penny of it. And I know that they get very expensive, depending on how large they are and what the capacities of them are, but we're, we're fortunate to be able to have those. I know we got one on our budget this year, so I thought that was an appropriate question to, to the citizens, but I think, you know, if it saves one life, you know what? It's worth every penny of that. So there you go. Okay, here's my fun question. How many days would you guess we have experience of 100-plus degree weather this summer? We've got some pretty smart people here this, this survey time. Yeah, the correct answer is, is five, I think, isn't it? Yes, it's five. So the one to five was 47%. I, I, I missed that, because I didn't know the answer to this question before I asked it. I, I was in the six to 10 range. I thought we'd had more than that, but one to five, but the answer is actually we've had five. So, and that just tells you, it's hot, it's, the heat index is really hot, but that's just straight-out temperature. So, you know, protect yourself, do as Chief Steelman is saying, keep hydrated and stay out of the heat if you can. So, well, I want to thank you for being here for another council meeting. I appreciate your attendance. I appreciate your, your participation in my surveys. And so until next time, we will see you then. We'll be adjourned.